Four.
Oh, yeah, we need another person. Sorry, thank you. We need to have more.
Workshop, we can go forward, we just can't vote on anything.
Yeah, but you guys couldn't vote on anything anyway at the workshop, so.
Yeah.
I think it's up to you.
Has anyone heard from Catherine?
I spoke to her this morning, but it sounded like she would be here.
Okay. Oh, yeah, where is Nolan?
I can make one call if you like.
Yeah, if you would, that'd be perfect. Shall we go? Okay, all right, let's, welcome to our workshop. And it's Tuesday, October eighth, twenty twenty four. The workshop is on the twenty twenty five budget presentations from our auditor, our clerk, and our elections, which is one person, our assessor, and the council. So, go for it, Bryson.
I would like to start off that I'm glad that I'm not in charge of the auditor budget next year. I only have to be in charge of two. So that's really exciting. But first, we'll start off with the auditor budget, and I'm just gonna go over the changes. As you can see from like the full-time employees, it looks like it's super massive. The reason why it's super massive is we're adding the new elected official salary. So Matt's salary there. So as I think it shows like it's increase of a hundred and four percent, it's because we're adding that elected official salary. On the other changes is subscriptions and memberships. So that is for conferences, so UAC, enough for two people to go, assuming Matt and Diana Schaefer. And then we added a couple trainings for the GFOA conference for Matt to attend. And then the travel that involves that as well. Another big change is we added thirty-two thousand to professional and technical for Matt to contract out for internal auditing if he needs to. I also want to say I went over the budget with Matt, so nothing is, this is gonna surprise him whatsoever. Because it's kind of weird that I'm in charge of creating a budget of a department that I'm not even gonna be in charge of next year. So I, and I got Matt involved in this budget to make sure he knows. And he said everything looks good to him, and he's okay with everything. After talking with Diana, there is one tweak that she would like, and it's, and it's not something that like we absolutely need, but it would be nice, is getting rid of the seasonal budget and adding that seasonal budget money to a part-time. So we have two permanent part-times in that office instead of kind of have like a rotation of seasonal employees coming in. So kind of establishing experience and knowledge of the BOE and tax.
Part-time instead of a seasonal.
Yeah, so right now we have one permanent part-time and one seasonal. But if we have two permanent part-times, would help with tax relief, veterans, and a BOE. So we can get that, you know, knowledge and experience staying there instead of just hiring, I don't wanna say hiring someone off the street every summer, but someone that's always there who knows what exactly is going on.
Where is that included?
So it's not included, so it would show the seasonal employees. Yeah, so Diana's request would be to get rid of the seasonal employee and add that funding to a permanent part-time position.
So would that increase up to that thirty-two thousand from the twenty-three?
Yeah, so probably an increase of about ten thousand. Since we do know that, you know, adding personnel is with the budgets really, it's, it's a hard ask, so, and she understands that. But if we could get there, it'd be greatly appreciated. But she understands if we can't do it this year, she's okay with the seasonal.
So would the seasonal employee budget then be zero?
Yeah.
Okay, and on that seas, on the, if it were approved for another part-time employee, would that part-time employee be cross-trained in other areas?
Yeah, so everything in the auditor's office.
Everything in the auditor's office.
Yeah, it's just the workloads that much, like, it's just that much of a workload right now when it comes.
How many hours a week do you anticipate for that?
Probably about twenty-six, I would say, but nothing more than thirty, well, twenty-nine points on some, whatever the rule is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Funny, I've never thought about this. Have a separate auditor and clerk, where's the auditor's office going to be?
That was a great question, we are currently working on that. As you may know, the building, it's there, but we're, it's tight quarters for everybody. So we're trying to see what we could do to make sure we can fit everybody in there comfortably.
So it'd still be located in that general area?
Yeah. Yeah, we want the tax relief area to be on the first floor just because our tax relief citizens, or stairs are pretty hard for them, so want to keep them down there. All right, you have any other questions for the auditor budget? It's pretty boring, other than those changes, nothing else has changed.
Okay.
Okay, all right, we'll move to the clerk's budget. So the clerk's budget's very similar to the auditor's budget. You would see a hundred fifty-six percent increase in personnel. That's just the clerk's salary as a whole, it's gonna be in that budget. Previously, the clerk, the clerk auditor salary was split into three different budgets, so thirty percent elections, thirty percent in clerk, and thirty percent auditor. I thought it'd be a lot easier just to have it in one budget instead of figuring out the math for all that.
So the clerk, the full-time employees, clerk salary then is?
Keep in mind too, Bryson is now, his salary was part auditor.
Yeah.
It's now moved over to clerk and elections.
Right, that's right.
And then, once again, subscriptions and memberships went up. It's UAC, and then for me to add, take one person from the clerk's side to come to UAC with me. And then UBLA, which is the Utah Business License Association, and that conference is always in St. George. I don't know why they make us drive all the time, but it'd be nice to have it up here every once in a while. But that's, that's why it's increasing, so I can take one more person with me instead of just two. Other than that, I'm thinking any other increase? Communications just went up to five to eight hundred, is just so we can, subscriptions basically for the newspaper and if you have to like PSAs. Any questions from the clerk?
Office expense.
Yes.
Covered fine.
Yeah, yeah, so we raised that to where it should be. Instead of asking people to buy their own supplies, we can do it ourselves. Yeah.
Yeah.
But yeah, and then nothing else has changed from the budget, the clerk's is pretty straightforward.
On the clerk's fees, that's in anticipation of raising the fees, or?
No, so that is all the fees that we collect, so business licensing, annexations, certified copies, grammar requests, and then we have our own, we have our own marriage license line that we get revenue from.
So you see that increasing as revenue, okay.
Yeah, yeah. We recently, well, I guess two years ago, we increased our marriage license fee from forty to fifty dollars because turns out we were way below the average in this state. And so we increased it to fifty, and we got a little bit more cash revenue coming into that. And it's, and we're about, we're still one of the cheapest in the state with that. Alrighty, we'll go to elections. So in the handout that I have, it doesn't show the sixty thousand dollar cut that I have with that position. So it looks really big, but I promise it's, in the tentative budget, it is correct. So.
So that two seventeen is more than it should be?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and then, so it should be minus fifty-seven thousand, six, or sixty, roughly in that area. We're cutting that much from that budget. Mainly because we don't need that money anymore, we're just that good.
Okay.
And then we, there is also increase in the part-time, and then we did add that one full-time employee to the elections budget from last year. So we have two full-times, an election supervisor, which is Michelle, and then we have one full-time, and her name's Kyla. And I'm pretty sure you guys met her before. And then we have two part-times working. And then the same thing with the training, it's just UAC, so I can bring Michelle with me and all the travel expenses that include, that includes. Now onto the good news about this election. Upcoming is, I'm not asking for increase, but we are getting money back this next year. So this next year is city elections, and they're, it's a mayoral year, so there's, there's a high probability of there will be primaries for the mayor races, and that's when we charge for our services to the counties. So we are paying it, but we're getting about, I'm expecting around two-hundred-and-fifty thousand back to do that election process.
Does that reflect, then, shows two-seventy in here?
Yeah, two-seventy, so that is, it's really hard to guesstimate how, how many elections are gonna happen because we don't know who's filing to run, so. But I'm assuming since it's, it's higher probability with the primary happening with mayor races going out throughout the valley, the threshold to start a primary is a lot lower. And then with the elections as well, we, we try to get grant funding. Usually, we shoot for forty thousand almost every year for grant funding to help cover some expenses or, kind of like, we pay this and then we get reimbursed.
So we collect a fee from every city or town that's going to have an election?
So every city and town that contracts with us.
Let's see.
Most of the time, it's every single city and town that has an election, they contract with us. At one point, North Logan was thinking about not doing it because they want to do rank choice voting. But they want to do, they wanted to do rank choice voting two years ago, and we said no, and they're, and then they went off elsewhere to see if they can contract out, and then they decided not to do rank choice voting and just stick with us. We're probably not gonna do rank choice voting this year either, we're just gonna stick to traditional primary, general.
Is it more expensive for rank choice, or how does that work?
It's not more expensive, it's cheaper for rank choice voting for the cities, but it's really difficult to audit. And it's really, when we try to tell citizens how it works, it just causes more confusion. So we want it to stick to easier for the voters to understand, and then easier for us to audit. Because election, that's hard to audit, is not fun. So, yeah. Any other questions?
Can you explain again? Yeah, I'm looking at the budget worksheets.
Yeah.
That we have here, and you mentioned that, for example, under elections, you got in this, in this sheet.
Yeah.
Two-hundred-and-seventeen thousand. In the budget worksheet, you got two-hundred-and-seventeen thousand requested. Tentative is a hundred-and-forty-eight thousand.
Yeah, so with the elections, it's getting rid of that one position that was like fifty thousand. But also in this worksheet I hand out, it also shows the merit and market increase, and the tentative budget doesn't show that. So that's why the, the tentative budget's less than the one I showed you. But the tentative budget, it's the correct numbers. And then when you do the market or merit increase, that's what's added to this worksheet that I have. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, so, so what you're saying, this worksheet would incorporate merit increase?
Yeah.
And the tentative does not?
Yes, yep.
It's, it's both the market merit and Mike had a retirement on that in his figure. Plus, there was the one position.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it should be the one, I think one forty-eight on the elections, yeah. That's what it should be, not two-seventeen. Yeah, I saw that number today, I was like, uh, Wes, like this is a lot more than I thought. But yeah, no, we, that's what happened, was that position was in that, but it's, it's off, it's gone, it's, it's disappeared. It's not a thing anymore.
Now, Bryson, when it comes to.
Oh, no, go ahead.
I know one of the findings that we got in the audit dealt with keeping of minutes.
Yeah.
And posting the minutes in the agenda. Be nice just to have that discussion maybe briefly with Micah.
Yeah.
Just making sure we have the appropriate manpower, whether it's.
Yeah.
Under the council's budget or the clerk's.
Yeah, we have appropriate manpower, it's, it's pretty simple, we just gotta upload to the website. Micah, whoever the new policy analyst is, will send the minutes over, the final, and then we just post them to the public notice website. We have Lola and LaChelle in our office that does the minutes and records, and they said it'd be a piece of cake for them. So we don't need to add any people, because it's like a twoman process, if that, so. Yeah. Alrighty, any other, sorry for a boring budget, I wish.
Oh, we like, we like boring budgets.
I'm like, I would like an inflatable bounce house for the elections. Oh, I, I do want to add, down the road, not this year. So during the primary this year, when we were processing ballots, it was a sauna. And we would like AC in that building, so there's, there is AC unit and vents in the building, but not down at the bottom floor, so we have like in the break area, but not down, so. From the future down, if, we would like vents and ducts, and the duct worked for the AC in that room. Or it might be another sauna, well, it will be another sauna, like we tinted the windows. Hopefully that will take it down two degrees.
Have you been able to have fans down there to circulate?
Yeah, so we have fans, but when we have everybody in there, it.
Plus the machinery.
Plus the machine, and we tried to open up the doors to get like a good breeze in, but then sometimes we let the snakes in, and so that's a whole different other problem.
Hey, I'll be staying away from the open house.
Yeah, no, there's no snakes right now, if we keep the doors closed. But that was it, because that's the issue we're following. I am planning on buying like a little, not little, but like indoor AC units to get us through like this year, but going down when we ask like capital improvement plans.
Is there anything that the council can do for immediate need?
Not right now, because it's November, so we're, we're doing good. But I do have funding for those portable AC units downstairs, and that would work just fine. But if it's, I, I don't want to say they're gonna like get pitched, like the office is gonna do an uprising against me because there's no AC, but it, it could possibly happen.
It was, it was really.
It was hot, yeah, and that was just the end of June. So during municipal years, the primary usually happens in the middle of August. So.
Okay.
But, yeah, like, we will survive and we will keep cool, but I guess going down the road, there might be a capital improvement request about AC.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Bryson, anybody else have any questions for Bryson?
Sweet. Twenty minutes for three departments.
I work fast, I got to it.
Yeah, awesome. All right, assessor, Mr. Robinson.
Hopefully this, hey there, Nolan. Hopefully this is just answer your questions. And of course, I've got Wes and Lorianne to help me as well.
Yes, I did.
Mostly just a couple little changes, some, some budget, I don't know. Things were changing in where, how we classify things, so very small increases, I would say. I, I am going to be doing a manpower request to, it's not reflected in this for Doug. I think most of you have met Doug Wallace, he's been working about less than thirty hours, I'm hoping to get him on full-time. Worked to hire him, that's what he wanted to do, and now he's wanting to go full-time, so I, I may be doing that. But as far as these.
Is that, sorry, is that to replace one that was before, or?
Um, no.
Okay.
No.
What page, what page is he at, guys? Oh, assessor, twenty-four.
Twenty-four, thank you.
You know, over the years, we've had very little increase in the manpower in the assessor's office. And I've, I've said this, when I started in two thousand and five, that all of those cubicles were full. We now have, they're now back full. There was a period that it dipped down a little bit, but they're now back full, and we have one other person, a part-time person, Doug, so it's just with all of the new buildings, we just, I mean, new, new construction, we're just having a tough time keeping up, basically. So out of our twenty, we're just asking, we'll, we'll be asking, I guess, for manpower just to move that part-time to a full-time that's not reflected here, but I don't think it's gonna be a huge effect. It'll be pretty small. As far as just some of the lines, as we go through, I think that first subscriptions and memberships, I think the executive used to cover that cost for UAC, and that's been put, put back in our budget. The travel and the education and training were split out, so it was thirteen thousand, now it's five thousand travel and eight thousand education and training, that should take care of us, so no change there, just, just a reallocation. So if you look at our professional and technical, that was increased, but that's because down lower on, in miscellaneous services, we had, we've been paying for pictometry, or aerial that you see across the county, we use everywhere, but we use it a lot in the assessor's office. So that has come down from one-seventy-five, we really have never spent that, so we're gonna be spending about a hundred and thirty, hundred and thirty-five thousand, and we've added it to our professional and technical, so that's really a decrease if you look at it in total.
That's not as big of an increase as what your decrease is.
Right, yeah, the decrease is much, yeah, yeah, the decrease is coming down one-seventy-five, we're, yeah. I think that's about it. Any other questions? Just a couple things for you on non-capitalized, or capitalized equipment down towards the bottom. We've always kept eighty thousand dollars in our budget for new Jeeps. We used to buy two new Jeep, Jeep Grand Cherokees every year, we haven't done that in three years. We're going to be buying two this year, not Grand Cherokees, we're gonna do a Chevy Trailblazer, they're like twenty-six thousand dollars. They're pretty inexpensive little vehicles, and we'll get two of those, we may get two of those again next year. We, the sheriff needed our Grand Cherokee, so we sent two of our oldest ones down there, they're using those, so. We, we hoped it could be well under that eighty thousand, hopefully fifty-two, three thousand.
Do you have anything here in the budget for drones to fly over the south?
Good question.
To pick up cabins and things like that that are not reported?
So you're buying them in this budget year?
We are buying them in this budget, but we'll be, we may buy two again next year. Our Jeeps are, they're, they're, they're fine, but they're.
But you don't have anything in your budget for next year?
Yes, I do, eighty thousand dollars in, you're, you're, I have eighty thousand in capitalized equipment.
That's for twenty twenty-four, is that correct?
Oh.
In twenty twenty-five, it's zero, in twenty twenty-four, we see eighty.
What's your department number, Brad?
Forty-one, forty-six, it was, I think it was a different.
So keep in mind, fees will be funded out of the capital project fund or capital fund.
That's for.
They're gonna come out and fund four hundred by step of drop.
So they were left zero.
I just listened to them, we're just trying to keep our vehicle budget as low as possible.
That is on the list for the capital that we'll look at in, in the future meetings.
Okay, I'm still confused, though.
This year, his request for twenty twenty-four budget is the eighty thousand for the Jeep.
The twenty twenty-five.
So he's fulfilling it from already approved.
But you won't use that full lady, probably, right?
And he says for next year, it's gonna come out of.
Trailblazers are cheaper than Grand Cherokees. Yeah.
The sheriff might not take them though.
He'll take whatever I give him, I guess. He was happy to get some Grand Cherokees. They're low mile, low, yeah, low mile Jeeps. As far as your drone question, that's a good question, we've never gone down that road of using drones. It's very difficult to get back behind these gates for us, they're, they, it's locked tight, and we, we do think there are stuff that we're missing up there, for the most part, we will pick them up within a couple of years. But our imagery up in the mountains has only come every two years, so we only see every other year what's been built. Usually, the bigger, more, the, the bigger, more legitimate cabins, they do get a permit on those. It's mostly the smaller ones that people just start building, and, and they're not typically significant. But I'm, there may be some exceptions, but we're tracking them down. We were, were made aware of a couple this year, and we've, we've, I know you guys saw one, we found, we, we find them every, every year, we find multiple ones that were not picked up through our permit process. So they're, they're clearly out there, and we're, we're doing our best to pick them up, so.
If they're not permitted, then the county with the sheriff has the right to go in and check it, does it not?
I, you know, they have the right to go put, and I've seen this happen, they go put a cease and desist order on, they tape it on the door of the property so that any additional construction ceases, and it forces them to come in and get the right permit, I, I can't, that's all I know, I'd have to defer to the building department.
Development Services enforcement question than the assessor.
Yeah.
Something we need to talk about.
Questions is kind of my point, I think this is something, kind of an issue that we want to address with, with the council, so we can get input on how, you know, how everyone feels we should approach that. But actually kind of develop a process for it, that we all know that we'll be doing, and that's fair, but, I don't know. Fair and firm, but professional.
I think speaking to your process, I would like to see a process where we have the ability to have the same ability to go in as, as the development services and the inspectors to go in and do the assessment part of it. So we, we don't, you know, nobody wants to see the inspector, but they certainly don't want to see the assessor. And I don't know if that's in the fine print of the permits that are issued, we'll issue this permit, but that's conditional on, you know, allowing the assessor as well as the inspectors to get there, I don't know.
Well, I, I, if they're permitted, then we get, we get copies of the, of the plans and specs and things like that, but it's those that are not permitted, we don't know if there's anything in there or not. And it seems to me like there should be some kind of provision in the law to, to allow entrance to property for those kind of purposes.
Yeah.
Is there not?
I'd have to go back and dig in there and see what, what is allowed, I mean, if they lock the gate, they, they, I don't, I don't believe they have to, but that doesn't mean we can't assess it based on the evidence that we do have. We can assess it, we, you know, and we can, if it's based on aerial imagery, we'll just have to estimate a quality and a condition and a size, we'll just have to estimate that until they can. So there, there is kind of, it's kind of on them, we can, and we've done that where we've, we've at least estimated, overestimated, you could even say to make sure that we're covering that, and if they want to, if they want to, you know, dispute that, then they would have to let us up there or give some evidence that it's something inferior to what we've estimated.
There's an astounding amount of private property, because the only thing that's public property is behind Simmon Creek where we were on. The rest of that is private property, so thousands and thousands of acres. And Matt pulled out a subdivision plat for us that was done in the eighties. I mean, they had impacted that with like forty-two homes, just on a little tiny, little itty-bitty place, so. There's a lot of things that I think we are missing.
Well, that's, that's part of the manpower thing, I, I would love to have just a little bit more manpower because it takes, it takes somebody a half, I mean, by the time you get to Hardware Ranch, you're only halfway there to most of these places, it's close to two hours to some of these remote. And then we've had to, we've even hiked, that's what Terry often does, is he'll hike, because that is the only method of getting back there. And he's at risk in, in some ways of trespassing, and he, he does it. We feel like we, we will cover him for that, but it, it just takes a lot of time to do these, and they're, they're, mostly they're small, little, tiny shacks. They are cabins, but mostly, there, there may be some exceptions, but we, we catch the big ones.
I laid my eyes on some very, very nice ones.
Yeah, there are some nice ones, we think we have those.
Dry Canyon, Scare Canyon, you're like.
Yeah, there are some nice ones in Scare Canyon, there's some nice ones in Legacy Ranch, it just depends on the area, some of them are very nice, yeah.
Brett, it may not be super significant, but let's say we've, haven't discovered one, but we discover one, and through imagery, we're able to see that we've missed tax collection for two or three years, and we can prove it, is the county allowed to go back and say, we know you had this, had this back then, but we didn't, you know?
Yeah, we, we have done that, we have, we can go back five, up to five years, I have to go back and look at that, but we, we have done that in the past, we've...
We'd have to be able to prove it, right?
Yeah, we can, we can prove it, and, and we have, you can go back even further than that, I can't remember if they knowingly were trying to misrepresent something, we can go back further than five years.
The state of Utah can come on my farm ground and tell me if I have a fence or cow to use my water rights, so we're missing something if we can't find a cabin.
And the county...
That's right, yeah.
The county has the right to come, if you have a certain weed, if we think we've found...
It's a noxious weed, we get to spray it or find it, but if they can find, if I have a cow or a fence, I think we should be able to find a cabin.
I saw the weeds, but I didn't see the cabin.
Our budget's around a hundred and, I think it's around two sixty every, or two sixty every other year, we budgeted the pictometry, most imagery we fly every other year, and so we just, that's why we pick them up every other year, so they do, we can miss them for a little while before we pick them up, we could certainly buy imagery every year if we wanted to, I think it's expensive, but there may be something that we're missing, could, I'd rather send one of my people up and try to track it that way, you know, and then, 'cause we need to be going up there annually if we can.
Is there, is this the same imagery that we have through GIS, what they fly?
Yep.
Okay, great.
Yep. And that comes out of the assessor's budget, I think it was initially driven, or the reason for it was so we could do stuff like this, so we can assess the cabin areas, but there's been a benefit to everybody in the county, every, you know, development services, everybody uses it.
And for the benefit of the council members here, I know that in dealing with development services, there are still many areas of the county that we, we purposely don't image, because we, we don't think there are any buildings there, but it, it just speaks to the vastness of the county, I mean, it, we don't do it every year, and it takes a lot, it's a huge ask, that's why they mount so much, I think.
You know, I feel like I, whenever I go back into those areas, I am reminded of how vast our county is, it's, it's massive, and we look at it on a map, but you, it takes, I drove a motorcycle a couple weeks ago from Logan Canyon and came around Blacksmith Fork, and it took three or four hours, you know, it just took that long, and we were all in Cache County the whole time, and it's just, it's a vast area back there. So we'll, we'll do our best, if you know of something, let it, let me know, but we, we're tracking them down, that's what Terry's doing, weeks out of the year, every, a couple of weeks out of the year, he dedicates to these cabin areas.
Is that in or out of his Sasquatch costume?
That's a good, that's a good question.
He's tall enough, he might even be saying...
He is, any other questions, budget questions, or?
No, I, I, I guess I think maybe we need to, we need to increase the budget slightly in order to get the manpower we need to go in and, and make sure we are assessing everything properly in that property, I just have a feeling that it'll pay for itself in the increased...
I think it would. Terry has been doing that for years, and he's, he's getting closer to retirement, and we're, we don't have somebody that has his amount of knowledge of those areas, so it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be hard, it's to, to learn that, those areas for, for people who have never been up there. Yeah.
Is moving the part-time position to full-time that you were talking about, is that enough manpower increase this year, or do you think...
No, I'm just trying to be as careful as I can, I'm trying to be as careful as I can, it's, I think if we do that, that'll be, I may come back next year for more if we need it. We've got by, I, I'm the certified general appraiser in the office, we tried to hire a certified general and couldn't get somebody, I'm hoping to do that in twenty twenty-six, so I think that'll be on the budget, I don't know, hopefully, we can, can hire somebody for that, 'cause it's, it's taken a lot of time, too, all the commercial buildings. So yeah, am I asking for enough, maybe not.
Brett, on your subscriptions and memberships, why the increase on that?
That's a good question, so UAC has come, our UAC fee has come out of the executive's budget and put into our budget.
It's the non-departmental?
Okay. I see.
I wasn't wise enough, I, I would actually like in the coming years to take at least one of my staff members down in the future as well, that's never happened before, I'm trying to be careful with that, but I think it would be helpful to have somebody go with me as well, so I will ask for that in twenty twenty-six.
And this is just a general question, our UAC fees, do we pay them as like a lump UAC fee to, like Cache County's assessed a lump fee to UAC, or does each, like elected office pay a fee?
I believe we just...
Separated versus, versus one?
Person by person.
Because are we just assessed Cache County's UAC fee is X amount, or is it like the assessor's office is this much, the clerk's office is this much to belong to UAC, council pays this much, the...
I think it's one big fee.
Mm-hmm. Cache County is this much.
Affiliate groups may have their own fees, so like Bryson, you mentioned...
We have dues.
Yeah, so there's some of the affiliate, I, I don't think USAC, that that's, that's the council's affiliate group, I don't think USAC has any sort of affiliate fee.
I, I'm not aware of it, yeah, but yeah, you're right, UAC is just one big fee for the county.
For all of us to belong to it, we pay one. One fee, okay.
Yeah.
Most of our expenses come from the actual conferences, like registering for them, and whatever we're ordering with, plus like the hotel, that's usually what we pay.
And that's what comes out of departments.
And that's what your line items...
Yeah, so it's the conference registration meeting.
But membership in UAC, the general membership in UAC is paid for out of what budget? Because it's kind of a law.
So, so that, that's what's changing, is before this year, well, before twenty twenty-five's budget, it was just one big charge, it was a lot of money, it was in excess of a hundred thousand dollars, and it came from the non-departmental department in the budget, that's no longer the case, it's now being split across multiple departments, I don't know all, our council is one of them, it sounds like the assessor's one, I wonder, Wes, do you remember, do you know how that worked out, how that was done, that fee was split between multiple departments?
So I'm just trying to pull up the detail on the Utah Association accounties now, just to see. So it looks like each year we've got a fairly big invoice of like forty-six, forty-seven thousand, forty-eight thousand.
So that must be for, for everybody, the dues or whatever, and then there's also a fee to each conference for each of us, and I, I, 'cause I know I put that in my travel budget.
Those have always been an individual one, yes, conferences.
Right, so the conference fees to, to go...
That's always been paid.
Are separate, okay.
But now, it's, it's kind of, you guys have expressed some frustration, non-department departments and miscellaneous departments, and, and this kind of, this was the only way to get rid of that, was to separate out amongst multiple, because it's something, it's a benefit that's brought to all departments in the county, so they're all just kind of, it's kind of like what we do with insurance.
Thank you.
And then Brett, on your travel, it's gone down quite a bit, is this again something that's...
Yeah, the thirteen thousand got split out, we had, travel is thirteen thousand, that got reduced to five, but we've added education and training, so the budget's the same, they've just been split out there.
Okay, I see there, all right.
Good question.
Any other questions for Brett?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much, thank you for everything, you guys have done an excellent job on BOE, that's been crazy.
Crazy for you guys, thank you.
So we do have a number of invoices that get paid.
Okay.
But each year at the beginning of the year, we have an invoice, it'll be around fifty grand. I don't have it split out among the departments in twenty-four's budget, so I don't necessarily have a response how that will be split, but that'll be something, maybe to follow up with departments and just make sure they included that.
Yeah, that'd be great, good idea. All right, now we have, that's it, Brett, you're done?
Okay, council, and we are going to hear a report from Micah.
All right, that's not working. Sorry, you can turn the lights back on, Bryson. The HDMI has been giving us issues, so I'm on page four of your budget finder, I figured, unlike the other presentations you guys have had, this will be more of a discussion rather than a presentation, but I, I can talk through some of these line items, I know last year we had a, a number of changes to the council's budget that we needed to make, there's really not as many this year, there's not as many changes that I've heard from you guys that you're looking for, other than getting a new policy analyst, but that doesn't change the budget.
That wasn't something we were asking for.
That's right.
Putting words in your mouth now.
But the, so if you look on page four, that's our council budget by line item, if you go to page sixty-eight, you can see the detail for it, so it's same budget, just in greater detail. So I'll just go through some of these that have changed significantly, employee, full-time employees, that has not undergone any significant change. And, and later in, later this year, in the next few meetings, you guys will consider the ordinance that will amend the pay of public officials, including yourselves, and if you decide to give your guys, you guys decide to give yourselves a raise or, or pay cut, that change will be made there. Subscription and memberships, you can see that has gone from zero to twenty-four thousand two hundred, that's what we were just talking about with Brett, how the, the NACO and UAC memberships, NACO membership is very small, it's like a hundred dollars for the council, so combined, it's countywide, that's very small, most of that's membership into UAC. You'll see travel went down six thousand, that's related to the policy change you guys implemented earlier this year, that travel, travel needs to be separated from education and training, previously, we didn't have an education and training line item, but that's been added, and you can see that lower down on the list, that has six thousand dollars, so you add those two together, that's where you get the twenty-five thousand. The other item, and this is one that you guys will probably want to talk about, is that underneath travel, you'll see NACO travel, in two thousand twenty-two, the council created this, this line item with the intent that this would pay for all travel to NACO conferences by any employee in the county. And so we have not had any travel to NACO conferences billed to this account, that was the intent of the council back in twenty twenty-two, I know none of you have, have traveled to NACO this, this year, but that would also apply to any other employee or elected official in the county, and none of them have billed this line item for that travel, so that's currently, if you look in Cassell, you'll see that that line item is zero, we haven't spent anything for twenty twenty-four in that line item, so it might be worth revisiting that for twenty twenty-five, do you plan to go to NACO, do you plan on attending, but keep in mind that you're not, for that line item and that line item alone, you're planning NACO travel for the entire county, not just yourselves, that was the intent of the council in twenty twenty-two. So the, the council, of course, can change that, but that's what that line item is there for, it currently has five thousand both in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, but none of it has been used for twenty twenty-four.
I don't know about the rest of you, but I don't think I'll be going next year.
Me neither, Carl.
Let's send you, then you'd be an unbiased guy.
So that's something for you guys to discuss throughout the rest of the year, or now, or whenever you want to, is, do you want to fund that?
I have a question then, if that's for the entire county, then that means any travel, we, this hasn't been used.
Correct.
So what is being used for travel to NACO, 'cause there have been some that have gone to NACO, right?
I don't know the answer to that question, I think it's probably being taken out of their own travel line items. I, I think it's likely that a lot of employees in the county aren't aware, that that was the intent of the council in twenty twenty-two, that it happened in a budget opening, they said, we, we would like to, to be aware of all travel to NACO occurring in the county, and by keeping it in a line item in their budget, that happened before council had access to Cassell, and so it was, it was easier to get information about their own budget, rather than budgets of different departments, so that policy may be a little outdated, now that you guys can check for NACO-related travel in other departments much easily, a lot more easily, but...
And was anything to have been reported to us, if somebody, if another department used?
I don't believe the intent was that it would, there would be some sort of reporting to the council, that it would, that there would be attendance at NACO, just that it would be in your budget and you would have, it would be something you guys would have easier access to.
I think we do need to revisit that.
So now, now you guys have access to all line items in every budget, and so it, it may be a little outdated because of that, but the fact still remains, there is five thousand dollars, now you guys actually did, some of you did attend NACO last year.
Yeah.
And, and the WIR conference, it happened here in Utah, this year it was in like Yosemite or something, so no, no one, no one on the council went to that, at least, and so it's, even if you are fine with it being absorbed, or you're fine with other individuals outside the council attending NACO on different line items, the, there's still five thousand dollars budgeted here, and you guys either need to decide whether you want to go to NACO and spend that or not.
Okay.
Cut it out.
Okay, thank you.
Micah, who was, who was attending NACO in the house? Is it just, is it the portmores canceled, basically?
Primarily elected officials that would go to NACO, typically with NACO, you're gonna be talking about a, a trip out of state, not always, last year there was a NACO conference in St. George, but typically, and this year, NACO was in Tampa, Florida, so it, typically you're, it's gonna be pretty limited, council members and other elected officials, so...
I'm not sure that anyone other than the executive and some council members each year have gone, I'm not sure if we've had other elected officials go in the past, does anyone know, as the sheriff, anyone else?
I don't know.
I don't.
I'm pretty sure David Zook went this year, but found sponsors and other organizations to help pay, so that he didn't have to, the cost didn't come to the county. And I have, I'm not elected, but I have zero interest in going, so don't even worry about that.
So um, yeah, that that's something to just keep an eye on um as you guys discuss the council budget in the next few weeks and months. The next few items, um, office supplies, uh, no change there, communications, no change there. Professional and technical, I I was trying to figure out why that has gone up ten thousand. I think primarily that's related to increased costs to our external audit. That Joan Simkins and other firms like it, um, costs are going up. And so that that primarily, if you if you flip to page sixty-eight and you see the detail for professional and technical, that line covers primarily three things. The annual external audit, which I do think in the past has been closer to forty thousand. We're now budgeting fifty thousand. I think it was closer to that this year.
Yeah, that they the uh auditors told us that the price would be increasing.
Okay, there you go. There's been twenty thousand in there kept to for the council to authorize um external audits as needed. And then two thousand dollars a year to pay for um mechanize it, who takes minutes in our committee meetings. So that that's what that line item is paying for. Education and training, that's the other side of the change where we've moved travel, separated travel and education and training into two items. Insurance, that's not really a change. Miscellaneous services, uh, no change and that that really is about it. So that's that's the whole budget. I think the the NACO travel line is probably the the one that I think you guys probably gonna want to make a decision on just because that's at the end of this year, that's probably gonna be just zeroed out and maybe we can just move that money out of there and put it back in the general fund at the budgets, December budget opening. But um, I don't anticipate any expense from that and I don't know if you guys plan on that in the future. So.
Any questions for Micah or any clarifications on anything?
Hi, it's interesting that uh travel expense, we're budgeting less for it.
That's because we prior to twenty twenty-five, um, expenses related like conference registration was paid for out of travel. We now have to pay for that out of education and training.
Separate, okay.
So we're just separating that into a second line item. So I and I and by the way, I I would know, I think I we probably need to visit that allocation as well. I looked at that earlier today. I think we probably need to be move more of that more than of more than six thousand into the education and training. Um, those registrations are not cheap. And it costs almost as much as the hotel stays and the travel itself. So.
I would put more into education and training out of the.
Yes, it wouldn't be any additional money. It would just be reallocating money out of travel into education and training. The total amount would stay the same. It would be neutral.
Okay, thank you, Micah. Very good. Appreciate that. All right. We've had all our presentations. We appreciate everyone being here and.
Seriously, the first three went fifteen minutes? Mercy.
All right, if there's no questions or anything else, we will adjourn our workshop.
Did you want to just have a brief discussion on?
You could.